Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone along to the Extraordinary Meeting, and we move straight on to the agenda. Apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor Stevenson, councillor Cleverley and councillor Joyce Clark. Sorry, not present are councillors Christie and Kane.
Item two, declarations.
James King said he wasn't able to come on Friday night, so works was principled, so apologies please.
Move on to item two, which is declarations of interest. Anybody got any declarations of interest? Move on to item three, there's announcements. I'll do my announcements in the full council meeting. Everyone. Item four, public participation.
Obviously, no questions in writing.
No questions. Move on to item five, honorary freemen of Stanley. Can I have a second?
It's a round of applause.
There's councillor Timby, has a motion he would like to put forward.
I would like this motion to be considered by council. On the 3rd of January 1989, Glenn McCrory won field game defeated Patrick Luba at the Louisa Centre in Stanley to win the cruiserweight IBF World Championship. This is certainly the most outstanding achievement by any person from the Stanley area in history. And even more remarkable is that the fact it was actually staged in Stanley at the Louisa Centre, which he actually got 200 yards from the ground. I feel that Glenn McCrory is a person of distinction, with remarkable personal achievement, deserves the recognition of his peers and his community. I therefore move that Glenn McCrory is admitted to be an honorary freeman of Stanley.
Do you have a second now?
Yes, I'll second Adam. I mean, it really puts Stanley on the map. And it's something that should be recorded, it should go down. It has gone down in history. The Louisa Centre to win that title, quite an achievement. And I think it's quite right, we should recognise people that have achieved a lot, done a lot. They certainly did. We put this town on the map without fighting. And I've got no hesitation to second the motion.
Is there any financial implications towards this?
Well, not, there's no financial implications on this motion here, on the table, obviously. If the council creates an honorary freeman, then in section 249 of the Government Act, it says that, it's in subsection 9, says a relevant authority may spend such a reasonable sum as it thinks fit for the purpose of presenting an address or a casket containing an address to a person on whom the authority has conferred the title of honorary freeman or honorary freewoman under subsection 5 above. So basically, this section of the Act empowers the council to confer an address, which, an address is defined in law, but normally, it's like a scroll or a, you know, something in a certificate, a post certificate in a frame. Sometimes that is accompanied with a badge or a medal of some description as well, to tie it up to the council. So, the legislation contains a power. This motion here doesn't contain any specific proposals about what the address might comprise. Obviously, that would need to be another discussion by the council, like what they want the address to look like if they were to acquire the honour. Or, it was the discussion for now, because clearly you asked me that question.
Personally, obviously, sport and achievement was a very good sport and achievement. But since then, in 2016, there's obviously been a suspended prison sentence. So from my own personal point of view, I don't think he's worthy. I don't think personally that, you know, just because you've got a rank in the station, if you receive a suspended prison sentence for, you know, beating somebody up, drunk driving and failure to provide a specimen, personally, I don't think that's, take a person out of the association with Stanley.
Anyone else?
You're the first, not Sin Cast, the first two. All of us have made mistakes in our life, and you've always done that. Let me take a couple of examples. Manchester is now going to give a freeman, make Glenn, what's his name? Tyson Fury, a freeman at Manchester. Much bigger city than ours. And anybody who has looked at Tyson Fury's past will realise that he was as human as we were. Now, when you look at who has just won an OBE, Durham cricketer Ben Stokes, suspended sentence for aggravated behaviour. So like I say, there's none of us. And if you look at ourselves, you find ourselves searching for things that are not savoury. So I would hate to think that a person's achievement, an achievement that he gave to Stanley, is going to be besmirched by little things like, you know, he's a boxer. Who the heck knows whether someone said something to him and because he's a boxer, he beat somebody up? So, you know.
That's the worst.
Sorry?
That's the worst.
I'd like to see people like yourself stand up to some kind of insults. So like I say, we're all guilty of it. He might have had a fight, we don't know the reasons why, we're making our judgements on a personal basis. But there is no doubt of the fact that he made an achievement as the world champion at the cruiserweight, he made an achievement and he gave it to Stanley, he brought Stanley here for here, and I'm perfectly happy giving him the freeman.
Well, obviously, that's your personal opinion. My personal opinion is that I don't think he's worthy of it, and that's absolutely fine.
That's fine.
But it isn't here, sir, it's actually recorded, and that's why he lost his job at Sky.
Councillor Wilkinson?
If anyone makes a suggestion for somebody else. As in, he's already given his name to the theatre, but Armstrong could put forward.
I'm sorry, I apologise to councillor Wilkinson. Could you, sorry again, sorry.
Alan Armstrong's already given his name to the theatre, would not be enough to give him the first freeman's award.
That's an entirely separate proposal, which I don't think that we can actually consider this evening. Certainly, we could consider it. This section of the Government Act is very specific, it's a very specific power, it has its own specific requirements, which is why we have a separate meeting, and it's not just been brought onto the full agenda, because it must be a meeting convened for that purpose. So Alan Armstrong certainly could be considered, but it would need to be a specially convened meeting to consider that. Does that answer the question?
So it's always meeting email and say, can I ask, how long, please?
Can I just say, Chairman, Miss May, can I just say, it's interesting hearing the opposition, because all the time I'm setting in, doing the serious stuff of this council, like setting budgets and spending money, they never say a word, they don't contribute, they don't offer anything, they don't object to it, they go outside and object to it, that was. But here we are, we've got somebody that's really achieved something for this town, and I had no bother seconding. But if we want to defer the matter for now and bring it back, I'm quite happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it was well publicised at the time, the fact that we had a world championship boxing fight right here in Stanley at the Louisa Centre. It's a significant part of the town's history. I think for me, some of the allegations, and they might be factual, they're big one tonight, I'm not fully up to speed with it, you know, people I've spoken to, everything I've met Glenn McCrory, he's been nothing but a true gentleman when I've met him down at the golf club. Some of these allegations that I've heard tonight, to be fair, I would need to do a little bit more research on. So I'd like to propose that we defer this tonight, and we put this motion back on the agenda for the next full council meeting, Chair, please.
Second it.
So our members have to accept that new motion for the motion, we can bring it back later.
Yes, that Paul Stone, he's still not been back yet.
Remember, just indicated the agreement with that, yeah?
Welcome to the Ordinary Meeting at the Stanley Town Council here at Sir Paul, where people gather. We move straight into the agenda. Item four is apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. I have received apologies for absence from councillor Stevenson, from councillor Cleverley, from councillor Joyce Clark, from councillor Kane, and not present is councillor Christie.
We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does anyone have any declarations of interest, or anything on the agenda?
I'd like to do play, obviously, the only reason I'm doing this is because obviously I have had dealings with the whole cultural society before, and because I'm one of the boss of, um...
By the county council? I know, this to improve your thing as well. I'm all right off to the town council.
So checking out Cleverley, no peculiar questions in the agenda either.
We move now on to item three, major announcements. Since the last town council meeting, the appointments I had is, I attended the staff and councillors' catch-up on the 25th of January. On the 28th, I attended a four-door shoot to the launch of the kicks at the North Durham Academy. On the 29th, I attended a trade plan ceremony with Stanley Robey. On the 5th, I attended the strategic grant funding four-door shoot with Greenwich Fox Football. On the 8th of February, I attended the Dick Whittington pantomime held here in the civic hall at the Lea Club, fantastic night. On the 12th of February, I attended the civic hall to the advice event that was on. On the 14th of February, I attended Spennwood Town Hall. On the 16th, West Stanley Memorial, which was a really cold and windy day, and I think everybody in the group knows who were there. But it was lovely that the church rang the bells 168 times at the end, and they've asked if they can be involved in the future with the service and the chance of ringing the bells 168 times. I thought that was a lovely touch at the end of it, and I'd like to thank them very much for it. Thanks to everyone who attended. And on the 20th of February, I was at East Stanley at Mdean, doing a litter pick with Carben Homes, McDonald's, our MP, Wardens and what have you. Good turnout, but once again, it only rained when we were litter picking, and soon as we finished litter picking, the sun come out, so, oh, never mind, we've got it sorted. There's another thing I would like to mention, I don't know if everybody knows, but Alex is in hospital, he had his operation today, he's on mode 33 in Sunderland Court. And he's fine, and I'm sure everybody would like to join him, wish him all the best in his speedy recovery from everybody. Okay, that's the end of my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just some usual announcements from me, obviously, we are filming the meeting this evening, as a member of the public, I'm sorry for that. Is anyone else present filming the meeting this evening? Now, I'd just like to ask members to check that they're filming, we're set aside for shots, so we don't get interrupted. Oh, sorry, please, as is all council, remember to, quite achievement record, I'm quite the chair, to Stanley, you're addressing, thank you.
Move straight on to item four, the leader's statement. Councillor Timby?
Like the mayor, I attended the West Stanley Memorial, it's been a windy day, I don't think it's ever been as windy over there, nor with memorial here.
Got your pilot's licence, didn't you?
Got me pilot's licence, I was coming on for DLA, and it is getting popular, it is a great event, and it's something we should all keep now, tell now, and record, that loss of their lives. The other couple of events I'd like to note was, Stanley held to both competitions, and they've both been well received from teams from all over the country. The first one was the under-25 International Ball of British Isles Series on the 15th and 16th. Feedback I've had from various people, competitors from all over the UK here, really enjoying the event, for Stanley. Then the following week, the Discipley Board National Competition was held, and the similar response, the competitors there, and I think that the board set across the road does a lot to bring people into this area, and it's all positive, so that's all I've got to say.
Item five is public participation. Move straight on to item six, confirmation of minutes attachment A. Did you read them?
Just move the minutes, please.
Second it.
Oh, you're wearing it, you're right, sorry. What did you do, because I would have said it's like...
Can I just see? It's just one of those things. Um, to the program committee meetings attachment B. We'll move on to item eight, the strategic grant for the panel. Yeah, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the agenda says, the panel met on the 31st of January to review the policy and application process for the panel. Few changes have been put forward to move the application window, so it was late in Christmas period. The revised policy has already been considered by the Financial and purposes Committee at last week's meeting, and the recommendation of the committee is the council approves the changes and implements the new policy.
Thanks, Mayor. Just like agreeing with what the Financial and general purposes committee says, and recommend they approve this.
Seconded motion to approve the changes forward.
Number nine is the request for discretionary community use at the civic hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As members will have seen, because they're attached to their agenda, we've had two written requests for community uses of the hall. One from Stanley United Partnership, which is, one request from Stanley United Partnership, one from the Northeast Organic Cultural Society, which also is for more than one occasion, but it's two separate letters. Council is asked to look at these requests, decide whether or not to grant them, and actually consider if going forward, we ought to have a policy developed to deal with these matters that are similar to this, rather than each one's coming onto a full council agenda. The recommendation in respect of 9C, which is about future applications, not this one, is that actually, the policy working group ought to be tasked with developing a policy to consider such applications, which can then be publicised through the council website and the council.
Council is asked to consider, so councillor Timby?
I would move that we accept both applications, and consider that the policy should be developed to go back to the policy working group then, back to the normal protocol.
Do you have a second now?
I have a second.
So have a great everyone after that.
Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
We want item 10, communications plan, attachment A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look through the communications plan. It was something that I was tasked with developing to make sure that we are looking into the future, maybe in the short term, beyond the short term, in terms of engaging with the public and publicising the events and activities that we organise for the communities, to make sure that there's maximum public awareness of what the council is doing, and that they get access to and deal with. The plan is actually running for a calendar year, and obviously, you can see my recommendations. What I'm suggesting is that we should adopt this plan, subject to any changes required, because I'm certain that you're seeing something that I've missed, when you've been scrutinising the plan, and then to extend it on, actually, to run it through to the end of this financial year or the next civic year, so that actually, it lines up with the civic year, rather than the financial year, better, rather than being based on a calendar year. We tend to think of events in terms of calendar years, which is probably why it's landed like that. So, as I said, my recommendation, subject to any changes that members want to see on it, or any additions that members want to see on it, I would recommend that we adopt the plan, extend it, push it out, and then recirculate that to members on the same basis as this plan exists.
Councillor Roger?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll just make a couple of comments before we move on to the recommendations, and I'm sure this will get agreed here. Just first of all, to thank Alan and the team for the work they've done, because I think this starts to layer it in down in a really comprehensive way, and so we can start a plan ahead for how we're going to engage with the public, and I think that leads us to my first comment, which is around, for me, this shouldn't be a comms plan, it should be an engagement strategy for the council, and it needs some narrative around it, in my view, about the two-way conversation that we have with the public, whether that be by feedback, we'll see by the website, or through social media, or through engagement with members as well. So I welcome, you know, not a massive amount of extra work, but certainly some statements that sort of perceive the actual action plan, which is what I think we've got for us today, that leads down how as a council we'll do that, in the many ways that the council engages with the public. So I think it's an engagement strategy, and we need to sort of build on the work that's being done to look at how we receive information as well as how we give it out. The second point I would like to make as part of this is to look at how we deal and communicate with the press, and I think there's a lot of the stories, and I'm not just talking about the big stories, Chair, I'm talking about some of the smaller stories that have a big impact in communities, and this is some of the work that you've really been at the forefront of as the mayor over the past 12 months, visiting some of the groups who have benefited from funding, and actually, the need to draft sort of information, be circulated to our local press, such as the Northern Echo, the Evening Chronicle, and other people who are involved in communicating with the public, because I think some of those stories are really, really interesting, and show the way that as a council, we've been able to communities to support each other, and I think that's a really big part of work the council's been doing. And some of that, we only ever get the people via the written media, not everybody has access to social media. So I'd just like to see some emphasis on the dialogue with the written press, so the work that we're doing there, taking a photograph, and we're doing some content for the internet, let's get press releases drafted along with that as well, just get them filed out over a plan period as well. But I'm really happy with the work that's being done, just like we made those few comments, Chair, thanks.
Paul, do you want to commit?
Yeah, something that's something I've had a little bit involved with, I just keep getting my name next to things, as we remember, trying to get it off, for some of the history events and things, so something I've been involved with, it's something that's there to be shaped, so if there's things that are left off, or there's things that people think should be done in a different way, then we need to be looking at them. But for the minute, I think it's, like Paul says, it's however we're engaged with people, and however we sell what we do type thing. So it's a good plan, I'm focusing this, but it's a 17-month plan, half of a 12-month plan, and so we'll be sort of extended in the next year. So just second the recommendations, please.
So if I could just recap, just so I make sure that I've got the motion. What I believe councillor Marshall has moved is that, is that basically, this, what I've called a comms plan, becomes the activity action plan, part of a community engagement strategy. There is an existing community engagement strategy, which what I will do is I will take that and I will tear it apart and put it back together with this attached as the action plan, as it seems to happen for that group, and extend it into the end of April next year, and then that will be re-presented to members for their comments. See, it is a living document, and as councillor Marshall said, and I said at the start, there's probably things on here that I've forgotten. The idea of this is about forward planning, and about planning your engagement with the public. If there are things on here that I've forgotten, please don't just sit and go, "Oh, I've missed that off." Please send me an email and say, "Do you know what, you've missed this off," so that we can get it put into the plan, and we can make sure that we're dealing with it properly. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify a point, I mean, I don't think this needs to come back for council. I think you could probably run it by the policy team when you rehash the engagement pivot, but I'm happy with the addition of the press releases into the plan for the stories that we want coming up, and with the additional information emerging, the engagement strategy to make one overarching engagement tool.
There's a second motion there. It's already been done, just, is that agreed?
Everybody agree? Yeah? Yeah. Move on to item 11, the residents survey.
Right, okay. Hopefully, members will have read the report and the attachments that I've put around for this. I was tasked back end of last year, November last year, with looking into a meeting, the residents survey, as we did four years ago, and so it's there for refresh. I had a meeting with Creative Communications to discuss the best way forward with this, and actually, the conclusion that we came to was that repeating the questionnaire in a similar format, with similar questions, which allowed you to actually directly spot trends, has some value to it. Obviously, you can come up with a completely different questionnaire, and you're still going to get to what residents are thinking about, what their views are. If you're able to directly compare it, you know, for example, the questionnaire, you know, the questions from last time were... If you're able to directly compare it, you know, for example, the questionnaire, you know, the questions from last time were, you know, "Tell us things that you like about the area. Tell us things that you don't like and what can we do to improve it". Well, actually, you get to see a direction of travel if they're telling you about different things, or things that were their top priority last year and are not their top priority. Or if they still are, that tells you something as well. So that was the reasons that career communications and myself put that forward as a suggestion. I've also developed, I've put together a proposed methodology. Now, really, this attachment K is really a starting point for discussion. By no means is it the finished product, because, you know, obviously, if you want to do it, we need to think about how we're going to go about it, what methods we're going to use to capture information, engage with people, and how we're going to put it together, what the timelines will look like. So I have put this down as a proposal for members to obviously build on and build out and decide if they like it or not, and discuss. So that will hand on to the honourable Chair.
Councillor Timby?
Yeah, um, on the second way, coming from my own, what I would propose slightly different, what I would say is I would propose that a small committee of members is set up as a task and finish group, which would be, and I've already spoken of the independents, which would be two Labour members and one independent, to agree that various questions in that survey and help to collect and help to collate them. And that task and finish group is set up to do that and then bring that back.
Yeah, I think to me, this is quite narrow. It's focused in on one bit, which is a much larger piece of work. So I think less suggestion is a sensible one. I'd like to obviously be involved in that group if I can from our side. And I think it's about before we start asking questions, let's get a picture of how and where we're going with it, and we'll get an overarching strategy for what we're trying to find out, how we're going to engage. And that needs to include some of the things that we picked up on before, you know, social media, digital collection, how we're actually going to go and engage with groups, how to engage with some of the things that have been suggested, you gave any of the groups that were funded or supported as well. Because I think this is an opportunity. Now, we're in a much different place to where we were last time. This council's got an overarching strategy. We've got a clear direction of travel. We supported a lot of groups to support our communities. So I think we need to be using our partners with the Advice Partnership, with the PACT House, with all the groups we've funded, to try and get the opinions and views of some of their users. I think we've got a real opportunity to build on the numbers that we've got at the last consultation that we did. And I think Stanley has changed, you know, there has been investment in Stanley since then. And we'll come on to the Master Plan Steering Group next. But I think there's an opportunity here to hit in some of the work that's going to be going on for the town council to collect some information and feed it into that process as well. But I just think we just need to spend a bit of time reflecting and getting the overarching strategy for this right. That's second less's motion.
Go on, go on, go on.
And from the Labour side, I would propose councillor Carl Marshall and councillor Mark Jefferson to be the direct men for that task and finish group.
Sorry, just to recap the motion that have been put forward by councillor Timby at second, it is to create a task and finish panel to discuss the methodology of the resident survey in more detail. And councillor Timby has nominated two Labour councillors and has requested for any Labour councillor to participate in that process.
Councillor Roger? So let's do it. And by Friday, we'll have the meeting.
Do you need to go to vote? Was that agreed?
Does everybody agree on that? Yeah. Move on to item 12, which is the Stanley Master Plan.
Thank you, Chair. Members have all had an opportunity to read the Stanley Master Plan brief. The Stanley Master Plan Steering Group, which is a lot worse, have had its first meeting back in January and is now scheduled meetings throughout the year. The electing chair and has gone through a brief and agree, which has circulated for you. The county council has written to myself and estimated that the costs to produce this plan is going to be in the region £120,000. And they are therefore requesting that the town council, the Keighley Centre, make a financial contribution to this. So that is, that's obviously what's on the agenda. And I'm hoping that councillor Marshall, who's on top of that, will say he works or not.
So I mean, the county council written in, this was on the back of the town council writing in to the county to assist in to get this process. And if you can remember, the work that we've asked for and the type of reference that's been included in the papers is quite broad. So it's looking at the whole of the Stanley Town Council area and regeneration opportunities across the board. So it's going to be a significant piece of work. And, you know, it's important that we get it right. It's important that we get the right expertise around the table to support us in producing it. The first meeting of the Master Plan Steering Group was in January. There was a good turnout. I think there was some really positive comments about processing, about what the proposals were. So, you know, I think it's an important piece of work for Stanley, because despite the fact that our, there has been some investment in things in the town, there's still a lot of work to do to get Stanley as an area and as a community to a place where we can all be proud of once again. So, you know, I think the proposal there is a fair one, that we allocate, that we support this. I think what's the funding request? £35,000 through an overall budget of £120,000. So the county council's putting a lion's share of that in. And, you know, we've got a ring-fenced opportunities reserve, and we've also got revenue budget for this. So it's a number of places we could choose to take that resource from. But I think it's important for the town council to be part of this process. And we seem to be leading this process going forward. So with that, it becomes a responsibility of contributing financially as well, Chair.
Is everybody in favour?
Motion.
Any, all need a motion?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to say that I think that as a town council, we should get a lot more than £35,000 out of this by the time we're going to be involved and we're going to be steering it to make sure that we get things delivered out of this plan. So I think that all of our community should be getting a lot more than what we're putting in at the end of the day. So I like the move that we put the £35,000 into the scheme, please.
Can I just, sorry, before we put this to the vote or approve the motion, can I just clarify in terms of the funding commitment? Councillor Marshall mentioned we do have a revenue budget, next year budget allocation of about £10,000 capacity, which obviously could, when we part this requirement. The remaining part, which is probably from that revenue budget, will come from the opportunities or earmarked reserves budget.
Yeah, that's the way I saw it.
Yeah, so we've got that clear.
So is everybody in agreement? Thoughts and feelings? Anybody against? Any abstentions? So everybody's in agreement, right? Move on to item 13, council actions of use.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try and do as quick as I can. Road safety wire that hasn't moved. Stanley Fund Meeting is on Monday, 6pm here to discuss that. The done actions have been done. There's some there because they'll come off next month. The comms plan is on the agenda. We've got steer on that from council. Thank you for that. Contracts have been appointed for the refug watch. I think it's 16th of March, but it'll be certainly next month. Local council awards scheme, that still needs to be taped off, but it will be done certainly before the end of March. The IT and telephones, we've got all kinds of issues with the telephones. We think that the telephones are resolved, sorted. Obviously, members will have had a few issues with the wifi. That's not the actual broadband connection. That is the routers, the access points. And Alan Tubman has got contractors coming in this week to fix that. So we are aware it's a problem and we are taking steps to deal with it. Construction, comms plan again was on this agenda. South Wall Banner, discussions are ongoing. And the Louisa Morrison Memorial, we have set a date for an event for that to be official launch. There'll be more details coming this week to members. So we'll put something out about that one. So that's something you said. Any questions?
Anyone got any questions? No?
Well, we've accepted the report.
Thank you. Move on to item 14, exclusion of press and public.
Could I move an exclusion of the press and public, please?
You can.